Thompson is not quite. Gurnett, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Mr. President.
Please stand or remain standing for the pleasure indication by Councilmember.
Chris Jerem.
I pledge to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two thoughts today. One, positive, and the other one, rather melancholy. First is to congratulate Omaha Central High School on the first graduation of their international baccalaureate program, which is only the second such program in the city, following believe Millard North. And so it's a wonderful accomplishment, a lot of hard work, not only in the administration, the teachers, but the students, and they're to be congratulated.
Go Eagles.
Yes. The other one is to take a moment to offer our prayers, sympathy, and condolences to the family of Omaha firefighter Scott Peterson, who was tragically killed last week in a motorcycle collision. And his funeral's today. He's laid to rest. Community of Omaha, community firefighters join with his family and loved ones in mourning his loss. I would just ask that you take a moment of silence to reflect on Scott Peterson. Thank you.
City Clerk certifies publication on the daily record on May 30th, no for pre-council, regular city council meeting June 3rd, 2014. A current copy of open meetings act is posted in white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate with the issues of the public, with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic device. And before we get started, I have one more bit of housekeeping here that I want to recognize a group of students we have with us today. Councilmember Thompson and I just spoke with all of them back in our chambers, and we appreciate their interest in city governments. They're groups of students from area high schools, working with UNO this summer on a summer political science program. So they're visiting City Hall today, and I think we have, I know I'll miss some school, no central representatives today, but we do have Benson, North, Brian, and I believe Millard, and South?
Yeah.
Did I miss anybody? All right, excellent. Welcome, welcome to your Omaha City Council, and wait for the cameras for the show tonight. All right. Nice job. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning orders and final reading plan for attachments will take items five through ten. It's one case. Five is ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the master plan to expand the boundaries of existing mixed-use area to encompass the site at 5319 North 30th Street and to designate a portion of the site fronting upon 29th Street as high-density residential for property located northeast of 30th and 4th Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is ordinance to rescind the parking overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Seven is ordinance to rezone property from R4 and general commercial to community commercial district and approve an ACI II area of civic importance overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eight is ordinance to approve planned unit overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Nine is resolution preliminary plat entitled 30 Metropolitan Place is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Ten is resolution that the plat transmitted here with entitled 30 Metropolitan Place is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearings on items number five through 10 are today. Are there any proponents? Please come down.
Near Jaggarwall, 105 North 31st Avenue for the applicant. Just here to answer any questions that the council members may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? See none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Agawal, if you, do you have any renderings or anything of what that, what the project is going to look like?
Not presently with me, maybe in a packet, or we can supplement it as needed, but overall it would be a four-story structure, approximately 20,000 square feet per floor. The first floor would be commercial with various tenants. We have LOIs from daycare and the healthcare facilities. The top three floors would be apartments, 75 units, about 25 units per floor.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have in terms of questions. I would like to see, I would like to see, I saw a little of them, so I wanted to, I was hoping that my council members would get a chance to see it. Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of comments real quick. First of all, this is the old Mr. C. site on 30th and 4th Street. I think this complements not only what the Caniglia's would like to see there, but I think it also complements the community college and a number of the things they're doing there. They have, there's about 90-plus million dollars' worth of new construction that's going to take place on that campus, and I think this is a complimentary project for that. In fact, I think they've been talking and having some discussion about, you know, maybe some use there in some form, but, oh, someone has an elevation? Okay. There you go. All right. I gotta put that in the book for you, Mr. [inaudible].
Make it a mystery and leave this out.
Can you just kind of go over what that, what that is? Can you see it?
Of course. So here you see just the three stories on top being apartments. The bottom floor is about 20,000 square feet. There's also a drive-through. So on the bottom floor, there would be a mix of commercial tenants. Again, there are LOIs, so it'd be really a mix that's catered at the local university and metro and the surrounding residents. So it would be healthcare, like a Charles Drew, and various coffee and breakfast places as well. And there has been interest in administrative office space as well.
Yeah. I just also want to thank you for that, first of all, and I wanted to go, I wanted to thank as well Dave and Bridget and Jim and all the folks involved in this. For you students out there, this was a project that, Mr. Agawal, I think we started this about a year and a half, maybe two years ago. Sometimes these things don't come as fast as we would like to see them come because there are rules that we have to follow in the planning department and other places before we can bring a project for, like this, forward. That has been done. The planning department has worked really well. Mr. Agawal and his team have worked really well to not only get this site, but to put something on this site that is going to be complimentary. And just wanted you all to know, sometimes it doesn't take as long, but I also wanted to thank Bridget and all the, and Dave and everyone in planning for the hard work that they put in to get this done. And I think it's going to be an exciting project. Thank you for, thank you for being involved in it. Thank you for looking at it and, and moving forward with it. I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero.
Next case is 11 through 14. 11 is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 138 United Streets from agriculture district to development reserve district. 12 is to rezone to R4 single-family residential district, high-density. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 13 is resolution plat entitled Wood Valley is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 14 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved. Public hearings on items 11 through 14 are today. Proponents, please. Mr. Doyle.
Good afternoon. Brian Doyle, Fulham Camp Doyle and Jobin, 11440 West Center Road. Also here with me today is John Coolidge with Lampre Nielsen and Associates, the project engineer. If you guys have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
11 through 14 are passed seven to zero. Next is items 15 through 21. 15 is resolution attached Cass Street Apartments Taxim Refinancing Rebound Project Plan located at 7023 Cass Street is hereby approved. 16 is ordinance to rezone property located at 7023 Cass Street from R2 to R8, high-density multifamily residential district. 17 is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI II 65 area of civic importance overlay district and incorporate in that district property located at 7023 Cass Street. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. B is communications opposing. C is petition opposing. D is communications in support. E is communications from the attorney requesting a six-week layover to July 15th, 2014 to continue the public hearing. 18 is ordinance to approve a planned unit overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 19 is a resolution preliminary plat entitled Cass Place is hereby accepted. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 20 is resolution of the plat entitled Cass Place is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 21 is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
So today we have items number 15 through 21 on the agenda, and as you just heard, it'll be laid over today for six weeks till July 15th. This is technically a public hearing, but I think we'll continue that public hearing until July 15th. But we'll have the formality of calling proponents up at this point, Mr. Jobin, and opponents, and may have a question or two for them. So with that, proponents, Mr. Jobin.
Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Blue Stone Development. We did formally request a six-week layover. As it turns out, we had a tremendous opportunity and maybe a shift in direction between, from the 434 units that was proposed by this development that would have been here before you today. It provides for the continuation of the project to move forward with the Omaha Conservatory of Music, taking the Temple Israel building, the existing building, and repurposing it for their use, as well as providing for a number of apartment units to be on the other part of the property, which would have been the phase two that we've all discussed in the past. But we think this is a tremendous opportunity that kind of came into fruition as of late, actually in the last couple of weeks, where it actually became more of a reality, and we're willing to kind of stop what we're doing to revisit that option and that alternative. But we think it's a tremendous asset, cultural asset for the community. We think it's a great use for this particular property, and it's not often when you have a for-profit that's willing to give up their, part of their profit for a nonprofit to make this project work. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, it's just a layover. The anticipation is that once we get further along, we did meet with the planning department, public works department yesterday. I think we've got their support moving forward. We got to come up with the zoning classifications that are most appropriate for the two uses that are being proposed, as well as go back to the drawing board from an engineering perspective and an architectural perspective, and then come back to you. So it's anticipated that the current applications before you will probably be withdrawn in all likelihood, and we'll then proceed with the alternative development with Blue Stone constructing apartments on one lot and the Omaha Conservatory of Music occupying the, and repurposing the current Temple Israel building and structure. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. As long as you're there, you did a good job summarizing, I think, the status of things and the intention to, the intention, the request to layover and the intention to then withdraw, which you intend to do, presuming this agreement comes together before July 15th, right?
Before, yes. I mean, it's not anticipated we'll be back here for the public hearing. I think this is the last you'll see of the 434 units, but, but again, it's, it's all kind of conditioned upon moving the project that we have or the alternative we have forward, which we think is going to come to fruition. Mr. Paul Smith of the Conservatory has, I think, got his money lined up and is ready to move forward, and I think it's just a win-win for everybody at this juncture, and I'm, I'm very pleased about it. So, and I, hopefully the adjacent neighborhoods will also be pleased, and also this council as well.
And so as you described, that would require withdrawal and to start over in the process through planning board and city council, and engage in the neighborhood in those discussions too at that juncture?
Yes. Once we get further along with what we plan to submit, we'll probably have another neighborhood meeting as well, just to kind of roll out with what the plans are at this juncture. It's a little premature because I think the intent is to probably have the apartments redesigned. It was the rowhouse look, you know, because that was going to have a nice presence on Cass Street. Now with the temple building being repurposed and being redesigned, the architecture will probably be more consistent with what you have there. So there's a lot of work that has to be done before we actually meet with neighbors and resubmit, but we think the six weeks are an appropriate amount of time to do that.
In our discussion this morning, you thought that first engagement with neighbors could be yet this month or early July?
Probably early July. I mean, I'm sure we can get the architectural renderings and the civil work done between now and then, so it's probably in July, I would say, the first couple of weeks.
And nothing back to planning board until at least August?
Probably, yes. That would be the earliest it could go back, because that would mean we'd have to submit in July for an August planning board meeting. That would mean it would come back to the council, probably the end of September, first part of October. That's assuming we meet the August planning board meeting, if, you know, then shifts accordingly if we don't make the August planning board.
Thanks. So I think it's a positive development that we're heading this direction, and I encourage you to do those things. I know there'll be much more conversation about that along the way, as well as a lot more information and details about the new concept you're describing. So with that, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, Mr. Jobin, I fielded a phone call earlier today, not after we met, but, and I don't know, I didn't know how to answer it. So someone, there's a rumor out there that, that the current temple is on a septic system. Do you know anything about that?
Well, I don't know anything about that, but it won't be if that's the case.
Okay.
You know, that, no, I mean, there's, there's obviously sanitary sewer water available. I would assume that it'll be repurposed to
Okay.
bring that on, but I have not gone so far as to determine that. Maybe John Coolidge, the engineer from Lampre Nielsen's here, he might be able to answer that.
Okay.
Hi, John Coolidge, Lampre Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road. The existing temple is served by a sanitary sewer that goes through the existing community playhouse lot, so that is an existing line.
Okay.
There's some, a little bit of unclarity as to whether that line is in an existing easement or not, so we need to work through that with the playhouse. But it is currently served by public sewer in 67th Street approximately, so yes, there is public sewer that serves the site.
Thank you for that clarity. And then just for the record, I know that you probably don't need my vote for this, but the, the way to, to get my vote, or what I would call a 7-0 vote, would be to make sure that the, the neighbors are contacted as early as possible and not just contacted when you, when you're all done and then say, this is what it's going to be. But if they could have at least some input in terms of what their wishes are, now that doesn't necessarily mean that, that, you know, they'll dictate, but I, I know it's important to them that they be able to communicate as early as possible. And so, you know, my request is that you meet with them within a week or two, but, you know, that's just my personal.
Right. Well, we're obviously going to reach out to them, and we did in the past, and we had two neighborhood meetings, and we even allowed a layover request to let them try to look at the traffic issues and concerns. So we have been neighborhood-friendly, I think, thus far, and I don't think we're going to change our, our philosophy as to how we move forward. Two weeks is probably not enough time, because again, I don't want to waste anyone's time either. I want to make sure what we roll out is, you know, something that you can look at and say, you know, yeah, like it, don't like it. I don't want to, at the same time, I can't have them dictate what we're doing, but I at least want to get far enough from an architectural standpoint
Yes.
and from a civil standpoint, that we have something that we can actually show that has some substance and, and relevance as to moving forward.
I think, I think the key is what you just said, I like, I don't like. Of course, you have the final say on that, but if you're saying that, that they can have some, some talk back and forth regarding these things, then I think that would, that would relieve some of my, some of my issues.
Right. And we're hopeful that this alternative, which, like I said, is, it kind of fell into our laps and, and in a good way. It just happened to be timing from the Omaha Conservatory of Music. I mean, they were looking for a place, and they needed to relocate. It just happened to be just the perfect timing for this to happen. So we're hopeful everyone embraces the change in the plans and, and will move this forward, and everyone will be positive.
But just in general, I, it's important for me, because I know that you have the legal standing to do what you're doing, but you know me, you've worked with me for a long time, and I like to also say, go a step further and go past what the legal says and say, how can we work a win-win? So, and it's, it's an effort, it's more effort rather than, you know, byproduct, so.
Well, and, and, you know, me as well, I've done enough of these to know that I, I try to work with the neighbors when there are issues that need to be resolved. In this particular case, I think what we had here today was a great project, and I was willing to move forward with it as well, but I think this is a great opportunity to move in a different direction that I'm hopeful everyone thinks is positive for the community and for this particular property.
I've dropped the old one. Now I'm just focusing on the new one now.
Well, I'm, I'm still like this.
I know you are. Let it go, let it go.
I know. Us development lawyers, we get mad, you know?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now, we'll have an opportunity to hear from opponents if they want to speak, and all the neighborhoods here, for one quick word if you'd like. Mayor Franklin Thompson will sing for you two. We'll see.
Pardon?
We'll see if Councilmember Thompson wants to sing for you two, but we'll wait and see.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Bob Huck of the Crocker Huck Law Firm, 1200 Omaha Tower. We, our firm represents actually several neighborhoods east of 69th Street, bordering closely to this property, certainly traveling along the same streets as they. Well, traffic has been a concern, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, let's forget about the old plan and move to the new one. Certainly, the involvement of the Conservatory is an important element. The apartments may or may not be a situation where we, we can agree, but certainly it would help, as Franklin Thompson said, to meet early on. Granted, the plan will not yet be in hard concrete, but that's the time to work on it before it gets there, to get the neighborhood input and see if maybe there can be some agreement on this. So again, we would encourage them to meet with us as soon as possible. It doesn't have to be a cast of thousands by any means, but a selected group, so we can continue working with them. As you probably noticed, with, with the prior effort, there was a huge amount of dissent to that with petitions and so on and so forth. And communication could do nothing better than try to avoid that in the future, and we will certainly accept any sort of invitation to look at preliminary plans when they're available and talk whenever they want to talk. So that's where we're at.
Great. Thank you. I think that's the clear message here today, so.
Motion to layover six weeks. Second. And continue the public hearing. And continue the public hearing.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Items 15 to 21 are laid over six weeks in the public hearing. Item number 22, resolution of the preliminary plat entitled Midtown Triangle located northwest of 30th and 11th Street along attached conditions is hereby accepted. Preparation and final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 22 is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, we've talked about this briefly in the past. Bridget, would you just come down and put the elevation up and talk about the number of units, and you don't have it? Okay. Well, apparently this is elevation-less day today at the council, where we don't have a nice little pictures to show people what it's going to look like. But this is roughly 170, 160 units in the triangle between St. Mary's Avenue, where, where it meets Leavenworth. As far as we know, the garden that people talk about, which is the smallest of the triangles, stays. It may be reconfigured, but it'll mostly be to the east of that and between 31st and going west there to the triangle. So unlike the previous one, this is one the Neighborhood Association is excited about. It's a very high density. It's a wonderful addition, and the neighborhood is actually welcoming Mr. Held's team for this project. Thank you, Mr. Fanslaw, yet again.
Our planning department comes to the rescue.
So this is a more urban, high-density project, and it's one that there's a lot of demand since the midtown crossing has had its success, and the Med Center is coming online, and the new Cancer Center for Employment. So a lot of younger professionals who want to live in the urban environment have created this demand, and that's why we're seeing this one just around the corner to the north of Park Avenue and Dewey Spaces from the, the Blue Stone team that was just in front of us, and there's more coming. So just learned about another one today, a few blocks to the north, so I'd ask for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Bridget, may I speak to you?
Bridget Hadley, City Planning.
Thank you. I noticed around 177 units with 171?
Yes, 178 total. That number just came to me. 178 total. One of those is an affordable unit.
Okay. I'm just curious, so how many parking spaces?
That I don't recall. I don't have my notes.
No, I'm just, you know, because last time we talked about parking. The thing I'm, because I'm thinking a little bit about your garden, which I think is a very unique part of the town. I noticed on the tip that like 40,000 is for improvement. Is that where that 40,000 would go to, things like the park?
The 40,000 in, in that project will be coming forth in the next.
Am I getting the wrong project?
Yeah, that, that project hasn't come before the city council just yet, but it will be coming in the next week or couple of weeks, or toward the end of the month. That 40,000 is slated for some improvements that will be happening at Farnham Street, the two-way conversion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights?
Second.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number 23, resolution of the replat transmitted here with entitled Burlington Depot located at 1001 South 10th Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. 24 is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on numbers 23 and 24 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Dawn Danley. On behalf of the owner, I'm with Leo A. Daly, 8600 Indian Hills Drive, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents, please? See none any opponents. Public hearings closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
23 and 24 are adopted seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, agenda item number 25 through 26 should be laid over two weeks for publication in public hearing. Public hearings on agenda items number 28 and 29 were held on May 20th. Roll call. Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. Items 30 through 50 are adopted 7 to 0. Ordinance on final reading, item 51, special ordinance, levying special tax for removal of litter, group number 2014-07, and there's an amendment. Public hearing was held on May 20th.
Motion to move the amendment.
Roll call. Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. Items 30 through 50 are adopted 7 to 0. Ordinance on final reading, item 51, special ordinance, levying special tax for removal of litter, group number 2014-07, and there's an amendment. Public hearing was held on May 20th.
Motion to move the amendment.
Roll call. Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. Items 30 through 50 are adopted 7 to 0. Ordinance on final reading, item 51, special ordinance, levying special tax for removal of litter, group number 2014-07, and there's an amendment. Public hearing was held on May 20th.
Motion to move the amendment.
Roll call. Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. Adopted 7 to 0. Item number 52, resolution at the Old Millard CRA located within census tract and block groups 74.55-2 and 74.56-1, consisting of approximately 86 acres, is hereby declared to meet the standards and a substandard and blighted area in need of redevelopment. Public hearing on number 52 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. The CRA, the Community Redevelopment Area Designation, we all know is for community redevelopment, and it, the whole purpose is because there is an area that is in need of redevelopment. The CRA designation allows for the preparation of redevelopment plans within a study area, redevelopment project plans is what we call them, in a study area to address those areas that are in need of redevelopment. Those redevelopment project plans will authorize the use of tax increment financing. So that's what we're seeing before us today, is a CRA designation, which is a designation in and of itself, and then what follows is, excuse me, are redevelopment project plans for the use of tax increment financing. Ultimately, the CRAs will lead to, because of the redevelopment project plans, recapitalization of and reinvestment into the real estate that occurs, and that leads, often leads to the enhancement of the tax base, and that's generally what we see. This Old Millard CRA is the result of several years of interest in the development, by the development community, in the Old Millard lumber site, which is this site basically right here. Excuse me. And finally, strong enough interest that we were able to move forward with designating an area as a CRA. Of course, we know that Lanahaw Development has come forward as a developer who wants to transform the actual property. The boundaries were originally drawn, if I can show you, to simply include the area that we felt had the best potential for redevelopment in the near future. So what was originally drawn as the boundaries are, what you see in the blue. So this is Cotner, Millard Avenue, the Crete, generally Stevens Street, 132nd and L, 100, excuse me, this is 132nd as well, and then this is 134th, and then Q Street. At a public meeting that we had with the neighborhood associations and the residents and community in Old Millard in March, a few property owners came forward and expressed interest in being included within that area. Thank you. Thank you. Express interest in being included in that boundary. So what happened is, we went to the April Planning Board, and the boundary was amended to what you see now in the bright blue. So this boundary remained the same. What happened is, instead of being, keeping the boundary simply as Stevens Street, we included the entire property of Premier Plastics, and then continued on through Stevens. Stevens Street was just a simpler way to describe the boundary. Then we heard from the owner of the Millard, former Millard Refrigeration Site that wanted to be included. So you see this little extension here that was added, this is N Street, basically goes behind the alleyway on this side of the property. N Street to 132nd, L, and then continues on with the remaining boundaries. That's about total of 86 acres now with this new revised boundary. We updated the study, which is in your packet, and basically it shows that the entire area still does qualify and meet the conditions of blighted and substandard, as according to the community development law. Some of those are deteriorating structures, poorly defined street layout, obsolescence of structures, a decrease in population, the unemployment being greater than 120% of the national average, and the per capita income of the area being less than the per capita income of the city. And all of those details are in your packet. So with some of those conditions, whether, not just describing the general area within the census tract and block routes, but also looking at the demographics, this particular 86 acres does meet the conditions for designating this as a community redevelopment area. And that will then allow us, of course, to move forward with redevelopment project plans that will come forward, and then the use of tax increment financing. I know there are others here to speak, and with that, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Mr. Prizzi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sir. Mark Prizzi, appearing on behalf of Millard Lumber, Inc., and the owner of the property, 409 South 17th Street, just wanted to say we'd be available for any questions, Mr. Russell is here as well, and we want to publicly thank Bridget and her staff for the good work and working with them, as well as adjusting the boundaries on behalf of some of our neighbors, as well as Councilman Pauls as well, for his interest and support, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon. David Rathbun, 5053 South 134th Street, president of the Old Millard East Neighborhood Association, and we are in support of the project, item number 52.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lanahaw.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Jason Lanahaw on behalf of Lanahaw Development Company, 19111 West Center Road. As I think it's been mentioned here today, we are, over the past 60 days, we have engaged the Russells and have reached an agreement. We are on board to redevelop their 12 acres bound by Q and Millard, 134th and 135th. We are, obviously, this is all, we've taken up to this point, and it's anticipation that the tip will be available at some point, and so obviously, we are in support of that, we are excited to move forward with this, we think it's in need, and I think it's an exciting opportunity for the city in general. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed, Mr. Thompson.
Ms. Hadley.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning.
Just for clarification, are we voting on anything outside of the blue lines?
No, you're not.
Okay, just with...
Only within the blue lines.
Okay, thank you. And then for my colleagues, we received a letter today, or it may be in your boxes and you haven't read it, but there's great interest from surrounding neighborhoods, and there could be potential interests from other governing bodies that just go through, so there's a lot of synergy on this particular proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I have a real good feeling about this, because I think of Millard, which I, of course, have an awful lot of ownership, I think of the Russell family, and I think of the Lanahaw family, and I don't think there could be a better marriage as the land moves from one family to another, and to see what they can do for Millard. Because this reminds me of several years ago, when Millard, the water tower, lost its name, Millard, it was painted white, and with a group of individuals saying, "Hey, we need to bring back the feeling of Millard," and guess what, if you drive out there now, you see the Millard on the water tower. So it goes to show you when people are really of interest, and I've talked, I've spoken to a number of people around there, they're very excited about this, and the letter that you received today, goes to show you how this is all wrapped together. The letter you received today is from a former student of mine, which the school is not too far from this area. I just see this as something that, I hear a lot of you talk about, the Benson area, Midtown, Dundee, and areas such as that. I think this will be in the Elkhorn area, since they have a business, thanks to your help out there. I think this is just sort of like that bud that is almost ready to burst, and I tell you, I'm just excited with the two families that have been involved to make this work. So you know where I stand.
Is that a motion?
Thank you.
Yes, I so move.
Motion, a second, and I would second that notion, too. That's often how I thought about it as well, Old Millard here has that great potential to be the neighborhood business district that we all like to see in our districts, whether that's the Benson or the Dundee or the Blackstone or the 33rd in California, and certainly Millard has that same excitement around it, too. So I look forward to seeing that development concept coming back to us, and I know it can be a great development as well. Motion, a second, roll call. Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. Adopted 7 to 0. Item number 53, resolution, City Council determines that the wage claim of Jeffrey Chubb for back pay is hereby denied in entirety.
It's a move.
Public hearing number 53 is today, proponents please. See none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, roll call. Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Mr. President? Yes. Adopted 7 to 0. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7F, agenda items number 54 through 55 shall be laid over three weeks for publication and public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items number 56 through 61 shall be held on the third reading. Ordinance is on second reading, item number 62, ordinance approving redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with the Premier, or Reamer's property to implement the 31 days 33 Marcy Mason Tax Incentive Financing project plan. A is communications and support. Public hearing number 62 is today, proponents please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item number 63, ordinance to approve an agreement between Douglas County Board of Commissioners
for the Douglas County Attorney's Office and Douglas County Sheriff's Office to combat domestic violence in the Omaha metropolitan area. Public hearing number 63 is today, are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Curtis, I might just ask a question that we discussed in pre-council a little bit today on this item, and that's just the notion of the importance of cash reserve to the city's financial picture, and as we proceed towards budget time this summer, sometimes there are so many other details within a budget that this discussion is overshadowed a little bit, so I thought today would be a good data, highlight the importance of that in this conversation, and a few questions for you. So I know we've had concern over the last several years on our cash reserve status, that being that we don't have a large enough cash reserve status in the eyes of many, but maybe most importantly, the bond rating agencies and how they view our capabilities on a rainy day, or in terms of having rainy day funds, and how that backs not only our budget, but certainly our debt and all that means to a city. So I know what we're talking about today for our vote next week would be reserving $250,000 into contingency liability reserve, and also the cash reserve, taking those funds up to about $2 million and about $5 million respectively. But even that's a little bit light, I think, in terms of what they like to see, so my question to you is just, do you think we're doing enough to have the kind of cash reserve the rating agencies like to see, and what are, what's our perspective going forward on that issue?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. If you look back over historically where the cash reserve has been over the last few administrations, we're at least historically at a high point again. So at 5 million, it's never been much above 5 million since at least as far back as, I want to say the early 2000s, and that was as far back as we looked. It took a dip in 2009 because of the economy and shortfall in revenue out of the cash reserve. You may recall that there is an ordinance that says it can be no higher than 4%. Well, this will put us, we're bordering on 2% when we get this done, plus what's in contingency. I think the bond rating agency honestly are looking more closely now at the funding of the unfunded liabilities, primarily the pension, and they're going to look at our funding obligations as calculated by our actuary, and there'll be a question about how close we are getting to that. So I think, actually, they're going to look more closely at that. I don't know that they would look at our contingent liability or our cash reserve as a hindrance, particularly since it's at a historically, at least in recent year, high.
So in your view, we have adequate cash reserves?
We could always use more, we'd love to get it to the 4%, and it's our goal to continue to add to it as best we can, but as you know, limited revenues, we'll have to do it in increments as years go on.
So if it's 4%, and we're at about 2%, ideally, we'd have maybe 4 million and 10 million in cash reserve?
If we, I'm not sure I understand this, just your question, but if we were going to go all the way to 14, if we were going to go to 4 million, we, or 4%, we'd be at about 14 billion or so.
Yeah.
In total cash reserve.
Yeah. So obviously, we have more work to do along these lines, incoming budget cycles, but we do have that ordinance in place that still puts, is it 750,000 a year more?
I think there's actually, and Paul may know, the city attorney may know, I think it's got a minimum in there that I want to say triggers at around 200,000 as a minimum. We'd have to look that up for you, Mr. President, but I believe it's got a minimum of around, calculated out to be about 200,000, at least is what I've heard, we haven't pulled that ordinance to see exactly what it said, but we have historically put 750,000, and I think in the 14 budget as approved, it's 200,000. Hopefully, we can restore some more funding to that in 15.
So is that, with the drop off there, is that ordinance no longer in effect, or is